We call the meeting to order for April 11, 2024. Turn things over to Pastor Cooper to lead some indication.
That's great. Father Kevin, we're so grateful for all the blessings you've given us. The Father has screamed it with his blessing to see Emily backwards and say, we're so thankful for her and him doing it in her life. Lord, Father, we thank you for our clerks, Lord. Thank you so much for us, Lord, and a lot of things that we all learn now. We'll continue what's a Lord, continue what's a healing Lord. And Father, it's a thank you for healing, Lord. I also pray for her health and prayers, Lord, as he's been diagnosed with cancer, Lord. I pray, Lord, to heal you and continue to allow him. I would pray that he do that, Lord, and say, Lord, thank you for all, Lord, who have been safe in the backwoods tonight, Lord. Father, we pray that you will be in this meeting tonight, Lord, and you show us how to have wisdom in serving our community, Lord. If you had what's a Lord, you know so much, I sing my prayer. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second, a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is we've got a proclamation for municipal clerk week. Let me get it once again. Move around, stretch these legs.
Yes, perfect, perfect, perfect.
I'm going to read from this, but y'all think my eyesight's bad. Okay. All right, proclamation for professional municipal clerk week, May 5th or May 11th, 2024. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time and honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, mentoring equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize that many other related duties of the office of the professional municipal clerk to include preparing financial reports, issuing permits and business licenses, budgeting, attesting as the noted republic, handling human resource issues, and promoting the town and its events. Now being resolved, I, Father Charles, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Youngsville, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024, as professional municipal clerks' week, and further extend appreciation to all professional municipal clerks and deputy clerks, in particular to our professional deputy clerk, Ms. Robbie Boz Adams, who on December 15th, 2023, achieved the distinguished International Institute of Municipal Clerks Certified Municipal Clerk Designation. I greatly extend appreciation for her remarkable initiative and dedication, her significant role with the changeover of software systems and website, exemplary leadership and competence during the town clerk's absence, exuberant participation at community events, and outstanding commitment to the town of Youngsville for more than three years as of February 9, 2021. In witness hereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Youngsville to be affixed this 11th date of April, 2024. Robbie, we'll put you on the spot. I will make you sign your own proclamation. Okay, I'll leave that up to Emily, but I do want you to run the center for me. You got the panel pictures?
Yay, Robbie.
Did you want me in the picture? I just wanted to be around.
Almost like none.
This one, I am her aunt. If we only have her uncle was not able to be here, Robbie.
All three, seven, one, two, three. I think I got you. You are. Can we get one? Robbie, you got those hands all, some flowers in there too? I'm not talking about me. I'll let you assess. All right.
When I first got here in February of 2021, Emily noticed something special in me. She started giving me materials for me, and six months later, I became her deputy. Then she started sending me to clarify that he was a creep, gave me her credit card and said, yeah, thank you. And two years later, after 25 years with the city of East Orange and three years with the town of Youngsville, I'm her certified deputy attorney clerk. And I'd like to thank Emily. The yellow rose represents friendship, and though she's my boss, I'd like to also, I know that she's also my friend, and I thank you. Now, some of this at the end of the meeting, but I'll go with mail. Over top of she and a certified municipal clerk as of this morning, she is also a certified tax collector.
You are all kinds of certified.
I'll tell you what, for those that truly don't know, and even some of us at this table, that the day to day that goes on and the things that these ladies do for the town, I'm sure it take a lot of work off of other departments, is immeasurable. It's not very often where I'm not out at some kind of a festival, and I don't see Robbie following around, taking pictures, smiling, just trying to make me look good, which I understand is a very difficult task. But I appreciate your assistance with everything, Emily. It is certainly good to have you back.
It's amazing to be back, I love it.
We're very thankful and truly blessed, I say it a lot. I do consider us to be more of a family environment. We do like to have fun, we get a lot of work done at the same time, and we are extremely blessed to be in this scenario that we're in with the town. So that goes to you and to the commissioners and to all staff. So thank you, guys. Any other proclamations from the clerks before we move forward? Not this month? Okay, fair enough. I will be on notice for next. All right, public hearings, we have none tonight, so I will move into citizens' comments. Did we have anyone that registered for citizens' comments?
We did. Adam Ziegler.
Do we have Adam Ziegler present? Okay. Do we have anyone that dialed in? Okay. All right, well, do we have anyone in attendance who would like to make cases in this comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? Motion to approve.
Good second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. There is no old business, so we'll move along into new business. And item A is a discussion on piggyback contract for heel dura pack. Did I pronounce that correctly? ASL, action requested is to award contract for fiscal year 25. But Mr. Page, I'll turn things over to you if you had anything that you wanted to add.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my sincere apologies and all the hubbub. I did not publicly notice the budget for this meeting, so although it'll be discussed, it cannot be adopted at this meeting. However, Mary Proten Brain indicated the last meeting that if it was possible for us to get on the list for the automated side loading trash truck, to get it as soon as possible, that that would be beneficial for everybody. And it turns out that there is a trash truck that is on the yard that we can purchase on 7/1/25 with the approval of next year's budget. And amazingly, because it's last year's money, last year is purchased by the trash truck company. It is cheaper by about $20,000 than if we bought it with this year's money. So not only did we save money on agents by having to hear earlier, we will also save money on the purchase of the trash truck. This money has not yet been budgeted and approved, but with the two pieces together, we'll be able to purchase the truck.
Yep. All right, so no action taken. And I, are there any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right. Anything else? Good to go. All right, moving right along into item B, presentation.
A motion to award the contract for.
I thought you said we were going to do that with the budget. I'm sorry, did I misunderstand?
Sorry, yes, my apologies for missing. Both items have to take place in order for the trash truck to be purchased.
Okay, okay, that's my bad. I heard no action tonight, so that is my bad. So again, the action requested here is to award contract for fiscal year 2025.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B is presentation and discussion of fiscal year in 2025 proposed budget with an action requested to set public hearing on proposed budget for May 9, 2024. I know we've already been through quite a bit with our budget sessions and workshops and things of that nature. Were there anything, any other additional items that needed to be discussed?
I had a few quick pieces. I'm happy to go over those now, or we can put them in the next meeting. Let's jump to the first. All right, so the proposed budget for fiscal year 24 would have a lot of major projects, but no new positions. The trash truck, as we talked about, it's about $450,000. But a lot of projects for the bypass will be $400,000, $400,000 in this budget. The annual repaving expenses will be approximately $380,000. The outcome of the heart max will plan, I've loosely allocated $150,000 for that, maybe more, maybe less. We'll know the outcome of the plan as soon as the plan is done. It allows for some greenway connections and then repaving of the backup parking lots. The greenway connections are mostly in the shape of those that are being built by developers, but it will also include a greenway connection for anything that we did with the future bypass. And that's based on the same side.
Okay.
These, reiterate the recommended road improvements, the board, as you know, has shown time and time again that they're interested in infrastructure, and it reinforces that with, you know, more than a million dollars allocated in this one year's budget for road and transportation improvements. And then I wanted to show the tax comparisons at the recommended rates for the commissioners and myself. These are your homes that you will be paying taxes on, and in Mr. Wiggins' case, his home and his business that he will be paying taxes on, recognizing that this is something that impacts all the residents of the town are sub included with the new proposed reduced rate of .55 coming down from the previous .64 with the reevaluation numbers in place. And then there was some question about what the revenue would be based on tax rate. So there's a .45, a .5, a .55, and the previous tax rate, if you just left it, was .64 previously, so left with 3.4 hundred thousand dollars. And then a question came in about, well, when is the building of houses happening in Youngsville, and what does that look like now? And so I wrote this down by 60-year increments between 1840 and 1900. We had very few homes that are still in existence, more in 1960 to 1962, and then a lot in 1962 to 2023. And if you look at the homes built by decade, you can see some of why that's happened. I believe there's a fluke with the numbers in 1910. I think that's a data entry error, a bunch of stuff was added to that year. So obviously, there are homes before that page. And then lastly, it's been homes built by year since 2010. Homes built by year since 2010, just showing how much growth there's been in the last decade of Youngsville, which has hugely impacted those needs for infrastructure, the needs for services, and then why the town is in a space like this. It's been the previous town hall that was 10 years ago. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I did just want to quickly go over some of the numbers. The fund balance of previous years was reduced in our audit last year, and that'll happen again this year. So we have a large fund balance that is reported to be a large fund balance. But as the board is aware, a lot of that money is that we already spent for the mainstream improvement project, and we're just waiting for the final paperwork, which I emailed DTO DOT about again today, to hopefully have that last final paperwork go through, so that we can clear up what is called a due to, due from, which basically means that the mainstream improvement project fund owes about a million dollars to the general fund. But we all know that's not going to be paid. That was what the town paid for our portion of the project. But those funds still ride on our balance sheet and make our fund balance the part of the sheet enlarged. And then we'll hear more about that with the audit, but I just wanted to point out that our fund balance appears inflated, although it is not on our fiscal statements because of that frequently airing and reporting, because NC DOT has taken so long to approve the final numbers of the mainstream improvement project. And Mr. Mayor, that was all that I had for the one item.
Okay, sounds good. We appreciate that rundown. Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. Again, the action requested is to set public hearing on proposed budget for May 9, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Move to set public hearing on budget for May 9, 2024.
Second, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports and other business, I get to go first. Cleanup Day is next Saturday. I'm sure I'm stealing a ton of thunder with some of these updates. Cleanup Day is next Saturday, which is 4/20, excuse me, at 8:00 AM at Bar Barrel. Try to wear some boots or comfy shoes and pants in case there's snakes and spiders and whatnot. But help us keep Youngsville clean and beautiful. 4/20 is also opening day for baseball, so super excited about kiddos out there playing and having fun. I've got to admit a little bit of defeat in the basketball bracket that the mayor hosts with the town employees. My Tar Heels did not do what I hoped that they would do. I would like to extend basically to every commissioner at this table, because I am certainly outnumbered. Be remiss to say that NC State did not have a spectacular run there towards the end. So sometimes you got, even though you don't like it, you got to give credit where credit is due. And have to give sincere congratulations to Ms. Garcia over here. She wins a lunch courtesy of my wallet, because I did not pick good enough. So congratulations on that. I have also say that Cox, they were right there at the end. So if UConn wins, she wins. If Purdue wins, he wins. So it was fun. Hopefully, everybody at town had fun doing that. And I got to say once again, congratulations to Emily for a tremendous article written about her and the town in Southern City here. Very, very good, very detailed information. So that is it for me. Commissioner Rip.
Hey, so we had a 5K in town in March. It was to raise money for the Tusquay Centennial, in case anyone didn't know. Our town's turning 150 next year, it's a big deal. We have 200 people attend the 5K, and really, most of them walked, not even the whole three miles, and then they just turned in their bids for a beer. But it was lovely weather, everybody had a great time, super, super happy with the turnout. And I can't wait to do it again next year. I will be at the cleanup at Bar Barrel on Saturday, next Saturday, and that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Person.
Speaking of town fundraisers, the Youngsville Golf Club is coming up, that'd be May 31st. You can sign up online, I'm sure there's still a couple spots left. Come out, enjoy juvenile beach or side, it's normally set up, there's somebody providing food, there's a lunch included. I assume it's the same way as.
There is food included, I'm not sure you're going to be into it.
Right. It's normally a good time. We'll have somebody feed us.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. But yeah.
Food's included. Do you have, do you have the update?
Yes, sir. So Chick-fil-A and fried breakfast, Chief Willie will be cooking.
That's fine. There we go. Chick-fil-A for breakfast, barbecue for lunch. There we go. You don't have to be good at golf, nobody is. You just have to be able to come out and ride around in the golf park and have fun.
That's why I'm playing, okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
All right, Commissioner Brain?
Speaking of golf, you don't have to be great at golf, as long as you've got a great cousin that can play. We're looking to repeat this year, so we're going to have my uncle play too, so we'll have a team full of brains playing. Campo meeting last month, major item from that is we did vote to approve the funding of the study for the US One Toll Road, and again, that's just the study.
I thought we did that when I was there.
That was the last meeting.
Okay, cool.
We actually approved the funding, the last one.
Yeah. Oh, we approved it, oh, yes. We approved, actually, yeah.
Master Parks and Rec Plan is still underway. The advisory committee is set to meet again on either April 18th or 25th. We're throwing out dates now, it's one of those dates we'll get back with the consultant company and go through it. And kudos to get on a great 5K. Enjoyed it, it was a great turnout and excited for a future one. That's all I had.
All right, thanks for that. Commissioner Johnson. All right, Commissioner Wiggins?
I've just got one question. Could you give us an update on when we're going to finish this intersection now?
I got a feeling he's going to give us an update here in a few moments.
I also reached out to our engineer about five points and said, please give us some date. I believe Principal Wiggins emailed as well, and then we have individuals who've reached out. They were supposed to have started again a few weeks ago. The final date and the only date they've given us thus far is July 1st. They've never moved past that date or forward or back. I don't understand why it's taking so long. And we have communicated with the district engineer that it's unacceptable that it's taking this long. It should have wrapped up when our mainstream improvement project wrapped up. And I know Fonzie and Representative Winslow and I were in that meeting, and I think Mary Proten, Scott Brain was in that meeting where we sat down with the district engineer and other folks from DOT and said, you have to move this project so that there aren't cones in Youngsville for the next five years. That was 2022. And as you see, they didn't listen as well as we would have hoped. However, I do have positive news on NC DOT front. They signed the reimbursement documents for the half million dollars for our purchase of the bypass yesterday. So although most of the NC DOT information is negative, I do have some positive. The other mediocre one is for the regional truck traffic. They have finally scheduled a meeting, and Mayor Flowers, Mayor Proten Brain, and myself will attend that. But they bumped that meeting to mid-May. So we won't know any outcomes until the May Board of Commissioners is the day before our official meeting. I will pass on to them again that the commissioners asked and care about our town and want to know why it's taking so long.
Well, it's because you get overgrown, that's why I asked.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Wiggins?
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, sir. Turn things over to our esteemed legal counsel, Ms. Katie Barbara Jones.
I know public business to report anything.
All right, and I know you just went through a few things, need updates from staff as a whole.
I had one more.
Okay.
Lucy is flying out tomorrow. She is flying out to Minneapolis for the national planning conference, and we made a last minute plane ticket reservation and hotel reservation for her, because we want the best concrete to plan in the entire country. plane ticket reservation and hotel reservation for her because we won the best concrete plan in the entire country.
I got a feeling maybe there's gonna be another presentation coming up soon. Maybe another proclamation, someone like that. Yeah, they gotta come back and they take your page. I like it. That that is absolutely amazing news, and what a lot of people don't realize is how small Youngsville is. There's there's this idea that because you have a Youngsville zip code, you're in the town limits, and we're still super small to where we're like, what, twenty five hundred people? So to have that plan in place and have it be as competitive and better than every other plan that's out there is is pretty astounding. So kudos and congratulations, because that is a big deal, and we will try our best to make sure we embarrass you within the next a couple of months coming up. So enjoy your time, represent us well, we know you will. And I'll turn things over to you. If you want to gloat about beating me in the basketball bracket, I'll give you about three seconds to do that, and then we'll cut y'all. Okay. Did you have anything to add about the the award, though? Because that is a big deal. Outstanding. Yeah, we love our town. I like to think we're pretty amazing. So anything else from staff?
As things like the articles and the awards are coming, we set up another page on our website to meet to these different various articles, news conferences and things like that, so that everybody can see what we're doing and the progress we're making.
I think that's a great idea. Yep, well done. All right, do we have anything else from staff? Once, twice? Okay, there's no need to go into closed session tonight. So I will entertain a motion till adjourned. Second, all right, got a first and a second. In discussion before we move to vote, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.